First up, we have an appointment with Stephanie Hagan, the end group, for a petition on Article 17, reduction of single-use plastic bags in Pembroke. Stephanie Hagan? Come to the microphone, please. Thank you for coming in.
Yes, thank you, Abby. I know you guys know we push for citizens' signatures to get the bylaw about biotrips more. And some of you may remember that before, and we wanted to just come through to you guys and see if we had a chance to review the bylaw, if there was any questions you have regarding it, or if there's anything in the middle that we could discuss that may help garner your support for biotrips. Not that you supported it.
That's all right, that's all right. I'm a fan of the system.
Sure, so I guess it's a great opportunity for you to tell us why you'd like to ban them.
Okay. We have, well, my team, some of us are here, are very concerned about what they're actually doing with the environment, in addition to the cost that we're actually paying for them. Eighty-one towns in Mass have already passed a similar, if not same, bylaw. It has already been reviewed by the Attorney General, so by another town. We are concerned about the environment. Stay in Pembroke alone, we're using up to nine million plastic bags. That goes down to 531 per person plastic bag. I don't know if you guys watched the Board of Health forum that they had, and they were discussing how we're no longer going to Kansas City, we're going back to the landfill from Taunton. So nine million bags in Pembroke alone are going to the landfill, if they even make it to the landfill. They're so lightweight that they typically, unless they're full of something, or you know, there's 30 bags inside one bag, a lot of them get blown out of trash cans. I have a picture up on our Facebook page of the hangrun of plastic bags all over, which is a direct waterway impacting an entire ecosystem that runs right to the center of our town. And I think that that should concern you guys, too. And I think it would be smart for us to get on board, because Massachusetts will be going to a plastic bag ban in the next few years. It was supposed to be legislated for this year, and it doesn't sound like that's going to happen this year, but it will be coming in the next few years. And I think it would be smart to have our small businesses in compliance before the state comes rushing in and makes them comply anyways. There's a six-month period between, you know, if it was passed and when it would be applied. So there'd be time for us to educate them and help them. Small businesses don't have to give us plastic bags to begin with. They're not required, it's not the law to give us a plastic bag, it's their option. They're charging that back to us anyways. So they have the option to provide paper bags, which are 40% post-consumer, and they're fully recycled, they're biodegradable, biodegradable to break down in a year, as opposed to plastic bags, which are none of those things. Plastic bags are actually made from oil, and they say it uses up to 8% of the world's oil just to make plastic bags, which is insane. That would bring down our oil costs if they just stopped making plastic bags again. And so the bylaw would allow for stores to provide paper bags, they could provide outlines in detail, the difference between what is considered a single-use plastic bag and what is something that's considered a reusable plastic bag. So they would also have the option to provide those sort of bags if that is what they would like us to do. But again, stores are not required by law to provide a single bag. So it's not changing their option to provide a bag, it's just changing the type that they can provide.
Yeah, and Stephanie mentioned your Facebook page. Maybe, not a lot of people in the room, but there are a lot of people watching, so if you want to give your Facebook page information out and maybe some other contact. A lot of people, a lot of people are very interested in this. So give your Facebook out and a way to contact you, and hopefully you get a bunch of people contacting you.
Well, I'm Stephanie Hagan on Facebook, and the Facebook page is called the Pembroke Single-Use Plastic Bag Ban page. And it's a public group, so they can just request me out. And I can put it on the connected if anyone wants to know.
All right. Just checking with Tanya.
Yeah. After the forum, because I know Dan and I were at that forum, the Board of Health put a subcommittee up. Did anyone from your group go to any of these subcommittee meetings, or, because they left two spots open for this group?
We, I was personally never approached to join a subcommittee. We did meet with a subcommittee member two weeks ago. I would say we have some differences regarding the bylaw that we would want to put forward, and I believe that ours is actually more broad than the one that they would be wanting to put forward, which I think would help our small businesses. We'll commit pick the little pieces if you'd like, but they don't have a bylaw for it yet, so I can't say for sure their bylaw will or will not contain that language. But I believe our bylaw actually protects the small business owner, because it provides them more options from what they are discussing. But again, their bylaw's not right, and so I can't confirm or say what that English we're gonna put forth if our bylaw does not pass the term.
Part of their spiel to us, you know, back a month or so ago, was that they thought they needed more time to study this whole thing and to come up with the best bylaw for Pembroke. But I'm not a firm believer in that. I think that we, personally, I think that we should go forward with it, and I support this bylaw 100%, but if you could just explain why this bylaw would be better than waiting another two or three or six months, it might be helpful to the people.
If not longer, because the next town meeting is six months away. And that's if they put a bylaw together, so it could be much longer. It's really important, I think, to do it now, because... Who has the question?
Well, they're saying that what they want it to do is they want it to study this whole thing.
Oh, right. Okay. It does not need to be studied, because 81 towns have already performed similar, if not the same, bylaws. This exact bylaw's already been reviewed by the Attorney General for another town similar in language. Nantucket put those into effect back in 1995. We're looking at over 20, almost 25 years at this point. It's well-studied. There's entire states in the country that have put the same or similar laws, and it has rocked down their, you know, their tonnage for their trash, their, like California, there's been studies on the plastic bags on the shoreline, us being a shoreline state, we even have whole voice similar results. And it's been well-tested. I just don't think that Pembroke is, you know, any different than 81 other towns in the state. We're different in some ways, yes, but regarding the language in this bylaw, do we really need the Attorney General to review another bylaw that may have one or two words difference? I think it takes six months to study the difference.
And the only one, one other question I have is, do you have any knowledge of any of the local representatives, or senators, or whatever, that would be supporting any type of a state bill to be passed, so that everybody in Massachusetts has to comply with this?
I do not have that information.
You don't have?
Right, at this moment, I could absolutely get you that information. But in Massachusetts, once 150 towns have passed the law, the citizens can bring it forward, because it has my majority of the towns. And at the rate at which the improvements have gone through over the past three years, I would think we would be at that stage, just based on the towns of the past, that not even, you know, separate senator approval, separate legislation.
Okay, I agree.
So, Rina, did we as town council for review of these articles, did you get an answer from town council regarding this particular bylaw?
Absolutely. They did say that enforcement's problematic. That's pretty much the same on most things of this nature. But there was not, the bylaw stands. It stands and it will go through. But they did say there should be more clarification in bullet point number three for enforcement. But it is passed, this is the exact verbatim passage in March, including first draft. I mean, it's exactly the same. There's no reason to think that there would be a problem.
Yep. And regarding enforcement, we did a touch on Marshfield, and many of the other towns have done it, so we have a lot of information on how we've gone forward with enforcement. Because again, 81 other towns are in the study.
Yeah, I think that was the only issue with Carolyn, that was.
And she said it is problematic. Certainly not a language problem. Your person wants to come up.
I'm a representative from Marshfield.
And your name?
Jean Meyer.
Thank you.
And we have the bylaw in Marshfield, which has been passed, and it's going to be implemented January 24th. And if you, if you decide to pass, you will be joining Sitewitt, Cohasset, Duxbury, Plymouth, Hanover, the Center Works. So it will be a whole region that will be with the same bylaw. So it'll be much easier to enforce. And there's no problem with, we're working with the Board of Health, and we're working with small businesses, so it's a pretty easy thing to enforce. The other question you had about the gentleman who was on the subcommittee, he came to a meeting that we had, and he raised a question about plastics that would be in a synthetic bag. That was the one word that he had a problem with, was the word "synthetic." And synthetic bags are used in all kinds of things. This is synthetic, and this is what the article was talking about. When you watch polar fleas, the fibers get into the water and they get absorbed and taken in by filter feeders like shellfish. And then it causes major problems with shellfish and fish. But this is a synthetic bag, and this is a bag that's meant to be used hundreds and hundreds of times. And when it's washed, the fibers don't go into the water, so they don't cause a problem. So that was the one word that was a difference in the bylaw that you had, and that gentleman was recommending passage of. And you mentioned enforcement. Our Board of Health said there would be no problem at all in enforcing that bylaw, and they have, they just add one more line to inspection they already do of all the businesses in town. And they said the language was pretty standard with everything else, where it gets, first time it's a warning, then it's $50, then it's $100 for each day you're out of compliance. But that's a fine that's used throughout the town with other bylaws. So I just thought that might help you make a decision.
Hey, coming up?
So I thought we brought that our language allows for synthetic to be sold to businesses, which I believe helps the small business owners, because they have more options. So you may be able to provide the bags you would typically see that are, they handle a canvas, but they might have a, like, hard outside mining, you know what I'm referring to? So our language allows for that. And the discussion with the subcommittee, that they would want to remove that language to the small business owner. So only canvas bags got the rights.
Well, thank you for coming in and giving us a description on why you want this article passed. Please put on the town meeting floor. One thing before we take a vote on your recommendations, I want to point out to the folks at home that this group went out and got many signatures to a petition. This isn't one that we brought forward for the town, it's one the town brought up for itself. So you clearly took a lot of time in getting all these signatures.
Yeah, we have 160 current shareholder signatures. If we got those in three days, so if we had more time, we would have significantly more signatures of people in town who want this bylaw. So I'll put that up there.
So I think we need a vote on a recommendation. All right?
You need to motion?
Yes.
I would move that we, the Board of Selectmen support this petition and bring it forward to a town meeting.
I will unfortunately second it, and the only reason why I'm unfortunate about this, and I hate to belabor this, is we are taking it from another town, which MMA tells us that it's great to do, steal as much as you can if it's working in other towns. But I know Duxbury and Plymouth are totally different, and Duxbury is more business-friendly compared to this one, how big this bylaw is. But I will second it to make sure the people during town meeting can do their will.
All right, we have a motion, and a second all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I vote aye, because I think the selectmen as a body should be unanimous in bringing something forward. I will have a discussion in the town meeting floor about it, and you understand that I'm not in favor of this, but I think if the Board of Selectmen as a majority want to push this forward, then I'll join you.
I'll go aye, also make it unanimous.
All righty, so we have recommended this unanimously. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, guys.
I recommend reaching out to all these people before the town meeting.
Yes.
All righty, next up, we have a meeting with the police chief regarding Articles 13 and 14, funding of overtime and two police officers. Thanks for coming in, chief.
It hasn't been signed yet, sir. It's about to change in 10 minutes. You can certainly look at mine if you'd like.
I'm not sure what the language sounds right now.
Oh, here, take this. This is, that's the excerpt of your tip.
Thanks for being here, chief.
Hopefully you can help us out. So this all came to vote, but we got inadequate staffing at the police department. And, but we were to the breaking point, we had to do something. So I've already implemented a minimum staffing of four cars on the road, plus a desk officer, which is starting to cost me in overtime, because our minimum staffing isn't that for full-time people that we have. So I have two articles in, one for overtime to cover the lack of staffing that we have until I can get two people in and out of the academy, which will be February, and graduate sometime June, July, so through the rest of this year.
Mike, I believe you have an issue with this article. There's a chance you're talking to Chief about it.
I don't, I, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't really have an issue with the article. What I have an issue of, and I will continue in performing my responsibilities to the town board, is the issue of one-time money. We have $500,000 in one-time money built into this year's budget. Approval of these two articles will increase that to $800,000. There's $300,000 that we have previously allocated for capital that will now be spent on the operating budget. It's another $300,000 that we need to reserve for fiscal '20 budget to be responsible. And it's really not good fiscal practice to spend one-time money on current expenses. The Department of Revenue, the Collins Center, the Collins Center actually forecasted 1.1 to develop deficit in fiscal '20. MMA, the Association of Town Credit Committees, all warn us not to use one-time money for current expenses. The reason is, it tends to happen, and it's played out here, is the $125,000, plus $215, plus $500, then it becomes $800. And then you become, it just becomes unsustainable, because free cash is cyclical, it's not a straight, eventually decline, change in growth. What you do is you solve a long-term problem with short-term money, and it tends to make, and it's proven time and time again, that it makes a permanent problem even worse. And because instead of running four cars in the road for a person in the station, you only, because you, actually, I don't want to exaggerate, but you created a situation that catapults a new part of work, but just a situation where you suddenly, abruptly, don't have money, and you have to make corrections, and very painful corrections. So it's really, if I didn't get up and say that, it's just, I wouldn't be able to get out.
So on that point, and I agree that some of this is one-time money. The overtime that we're going to need to get us through this year, to keep the shift strength safe, for the town and safety of my offices, is one-time money. Because at the end of the year, then you're going to have the offices in the academy that will be graduated. That second part of the article is to pay for police officers. That is going to be added to the budget every year. Now, I get it, you need to have this, but, you know, we have to create a safe environment for the police officers to work in. And, you know, a town of 20,000 people, 24 square miles, to have three offices on the road, it's ridiculous. I looked at the, right after the foulment, the two officers were shot in foulment, I looked at, I went in to see my shift, I came in in the morning, and I have a north car and a south car, a sergeant in the middle. And I looked at the calls that they went on, and there were a lot of simultaneous calls. Well, how's that sergeant supposed to back up two officers at the same time? Can't happen. They'll only be at one place at one time. So this is a problem that we've had for a long time. I mean, I've been in 32 years on the job. When I first started, we had five people assigned to the midnight shift. And in the 90s, we had six people assigned to the day shift, so you could have five cars on the road, and one on the desk. We're trying to get back to that. So is it the right time and maybe the right method to do it? Probably not. Can we wait? Definitely not. We need to take some action. This town handles crises very well. Health insurance went up $1 million, and what did we do? We found the money and we took care of it. Well, I don't know, there isn't a big enough box for me to stand on to tell you that we got a problem and we got to fix it. So do I know where the money's going to come from? No. But if we have some surplus money right now, we need to take care of this problem right now. And then we're going to have to deal with our spring budget, figure out how to maintain that. I can't tell you any other way. I mean, the morale of the police officers suffers when there's three cars out there on the road trying to handle everything that they do. We're over 13,000 calls already this year. 13,000 calls. Most of the calls we go to now involve mental health, drugs, or alcohol. Can't send one person to do that. And think about this, all right? The lameless police officer that died, Sajin Chesna, was a routine caller. Routine. He was going to a hit-and-run property damage motor vehicle accident, and Sunday morning, and he ended up getting killed. Foulment sent two cars, because they had them, two cars to a call of somebody breaking bottles in the street, a disturbance. Routinely, we have one person that goes to that, the second car, if they're available, will show up. And two officers got shot. I can't change the workload, I can't reduce the number of calls, we're not making widgets, we're answering calls for service. And we have to do it safely. Every single day on a day shift, the four cars that are on the road right now are busy. They are busy. We do tremendous amount of custody issues, we do a lot of mental health, we take a lot of people to the hospital, involuntary commitments, voluntary commitments, we do a lot of that stuff. There's no way not to do that without people. Yeah, we have a problem right now. I've already raised the minimum manpower, because I had to. I don't have a choice. I cannot not send people. I cannot send people out in an unsafe circumstance. That's not right. That's what you're hiring for, to try and do the best that we can here. So we need, as a town, to figure out how to fund that. And yeah, is it the best time to do it? No. But we've been trying to do this incrementally, and we're at the breaking point. We need to push it forward. I don't have any ambulance fund to take money from, you know, we don't raise money where, that's not what we do. We provide services, and we have to do it safely, and we have to do it efficiently. And I have to protect the well-being of my police officers. So if you have better suggestions? So what I'm looking for is the overtime money to keep my shifts at four cars on the road until July 1st. And I'm also looking to put two people into the February academy, which I have to start planning on now. I just spent the last two hours in the station working on hiring permanent police officers, so that we have trained, ready people to go to the academy. And get them in the academy, and I have to know sooner than later, because as soon as those seats open up, I have to make sure that I have people available. So there's two separate funding. First one is for the overtime to get us through the year, and the second one is to pay for two officers for six months, so they get to the academy. The town has to realize that that part is a permanent addition to the budget, that has to be dealt with in the following budget. I'll deal with that in January with advisory. I don't know what else to do. I have to take care of the town, I have to take care of the people, I have to take care of my police officers. Pretty simple where I come from. As far as if I answer that, that's gonna be all I have to put, I have to get it figured out, I make it work.
Chief, in the conversation that we had, you had suggested that the $160,000 for overtime would disappear FY '20?
Correct. Because I'm filling slots that I don't have permanent people to fill, fill them all the time. I don't have another choice.
So that for FY '20, the increase to your budget would be the two full-time people for a full year, which is around $155,000, correct?
That's what I'm estimating, right? Give or take, depending on education levels and, yeah, some of that part.
Mr. Chairman, I echo Mr. Buckley's comments. I mean, obviously, this is something that the chief needs and wants, and I'm not real sure where we get the money, but, yeah. But that's just where we are on October 1st.
All right, thank you.
So chief, help us with something, if you can. Worst-case scenario, next spring, town doesn't even have enough money for what we need going Hiring two people and then having to let them go. Just give your thoughts on a scenario like that, if you can.
I think you're going to have to figure out where you're going to get the money. I mean, we have a constant influx of calls for service. How do you stop that? Can't close for two nights a week and fund five sevenths of a budget. We have to be available every single day to handle these calls. So I don't, I don't know. I mean, this is one of those things, when you're in Bruce Lee, you gotta fix it. You gotta find out how to fix it. Bruce Lee can. So we have to find out how to fix it. I don't see another, you know, case scenario. How do you lay off people? The workload is still there. The dangerousness is still there. You need people to do this. There's no other way of doing it. So I don't have an answer for you. I say that we have to find money, we have to make this work.
So, right now, chief, for your information, you may already know this, but for the public's information as well, the Board of Selectmen and School Committee have been having joint budget committee discussions. And what we're trying to do, it's, it's actually supplementary to the Capital Fund Committee and the, what was the name of the UMass study that was done?
Collins. Long-range forecasting.
The long-range forecasting. So it's kind of an offshoot of all those discussions that we've been having. And what I've been saying, and I think what you're suggesting, is that the town needs to reset our budget to the value that we need, so that your department can run efficiently and safely, same thing with the schools and every other department. I just, Proposition 2 and 1/2 has bypassed us. We are, we are in a position... We are, we are in a position that we need to reset zero. We need to reset what the town needs to pay. And I understand that, I'm certain you do, and other people feel the same way, it's just a matter of...
We missed the meeting at 7:15. We missed the meeting at 7:15.
All right. So we need, we need to re, we need to reset zero, but we need to get all of our facts together, we need to get every department head, the public, all involved, so that we can move in that direction. So you don't hire two people and then have to lay them off in the spring or next fall. And we're working toward that. So that's coming up. And there'll be more discussions coming up well before this coming Spring Town Meeting. But I need to know for this request, we're gonna need to dig deep to find this. And I don't know where they are, I don't know where it's coming from, the town accountant and the town administrator doesn't know where it's coming from right now. So it's a real pinch for us, Rick.
I get that, but it's a worse pinch for me. I have to do what I have to do. I mean, I just, we have a job to do, and we're doing it. But to do it with less than what we've been doing is, we've got to that point where we can't. So, yeah, you have to find this, you've got to make it happen. Then again, I've been a supporter of an override, everyone's afraid to say it. We were out on a ledge last year, kind of by ourselves, fire Department, Police Department, and DPW. And it shouldn't be that way, the whole town needs a reset. You know, we've done some incredible things in the last 16 years. I mean, we left the school system, we created our own. And we've done a lot of good things, but we've been living paycheck to paycheck ever since then. And the town's grown. And the types of calls that we have have changed. They take more time to deal with. We just can't go take a report and end it. It's not how it is. I mean, we're trying to, trying to make a difference, and we're trying to make Pembroke that town that everybody wants to be in, but I also can't do it, you know, with two people, three people, trying to shoulder the load for 20,000 population. No, so we've got to keep our minimum where it is, and the town's going to have to figure out what we're going to do. I'd be more than willing to work with you and meet with you, I'm not a financial guy, I'm a police chief. And my job is to tell you what I need. And I've been singing this song since I started. This isn't anything new to anybody. And we've tried other alternatives and everything else, but I think with the events of Yarmouth, and Falmouth, and Plymouth, and Waymouth, things have changed. And I can't go back and say, yeah, I wish we could have done something else, and I can't. It's not going to happen. I have to provide the services that we need, I have to provide the safety for my offices. So whatever it takes on your part, whatever you need from me, I'm willing to do. But I have to tell you, that's the seriousness of this. This isn't like, well, we put it off for another year, put it off for another year. And there is no putting it off. We're standing right on the edge.
I'd just like to say that I think the Board of Selectmen should support the chief and let this article go into town meeting with the Board of Selectmen behind him. The police fire and the DPW are first-line of defense on what we have in this town. And it's not like hiring an extra person at the library, or hiring an extra dog officer, or hiring somebody somewhere else, or giving a lot of people raises within the town to bring the staff levels up and all that other stuff. This is first-line defense. The police fire and DPW are very important, and I really think that we should back the chief on it. Unfortunately, if it gets to town meeting, everybody's going to have their views and how it goes on a vote there, and we have no idea. But I would like to support you 100 percent.
Thank you. I have to tell you, the people that I've talked to, the town's people that I've talked to, who are very supportive of the police fire, they get it. And I think they need to know the seriousness of this, you know, because it's our job to let them know, we've got to be transparent on what's going on. I've never liked to discuss the cruiser schemes and how many people we actually have out there, because they think that's... But we're at that point. I don't have anything else to tell them other than the truth in which they're handed. And we shouldn't, we can't.
Chief, how is the opioid crisis affecting your department?
Again, we belong to a lot of outreach, and through that outreach, we're realizing that we can't just go after the fact, deal with it, and move on. We actually have to find out what some of the root causes and these problems are. So we're spending more time on calls like that, trying to help people so that we don't have to go back. You know, and again, somebody said, well, if crime rates are down, why do we need more police officers? Right, crime rates are down because we're involved in a lot more things. But the nature and the types of calls that are going on, a lot more mental health, and there are a lot more time-consuming for the officers, and dangerous for the officers. So that's why we need more people. Just to let you know, the opioid group that we belong to, Quinham County Outreach, just got a, almost a $500,000 grant for two years to help put some full-time staff in. They just awarded, have been, will be awarded next week at the International Association of Chiefs of Police, an award for a ride throughout the country for a grassroots program that's actually having some effect, positive effects. And again, we have several people involved with that on a regular basis, on a daily basis, because it's that important to provide this back service for our people.
Any other questions for the chief?
Nothing, it's not going to be too damn difficult, put it that way.
There you go.
I mean, we've talked before, Rick, and, you know, and I do fully support, you know, our public safety, because, you know, you guys are on the front line. But same thing, it's, it scares me where the hell we're going to get it, or basically, if your officers are going to be in harm's way, you know, if you're not adequately funded. So like I said, I'm torn, I'm willing to put it on to town meeting and let the people decide. For me, like I said, it's just a scary thought either way.
But, you know, I think it's important that the police department knows that the Board of Selectmen support them, because that's important. And I know you always have, it's never been a question in my mind of that, but again, harm's way, we're in harm's way to be called to go to. But we've got to, we've got to at least try to even up the odds a little bit and give them the opportunity, you know, just think about, you know, you have more Board of Selectmen sitting at that table right now than I have a shift for the entire town. I mean, that's the reality of it right there. So...
I'm not making the same money, though.
I know.
So we'd still say you make too much, though.
All right, do you have a question?
I just have more of a statement for the chief. About three or four years ago, we had a conversation, you and I, about it's going to be unsafe eventually to be a police officer on the street. And I think what you're saying is that day is here. And I think that regardless of where we take the funding from, and if we have to go department by department and do like we did 15 years or so ago, and cut, you know, 3% across the board, or whatever it happened to be, to make the difference up, I don't think you can run a shift of police officers with three officers on the street. I don't think that makes any type of safety sense. So I would, I would back this in support of going to town meeting.
You know, I think this town's done a tremendous job when they're faced with a crisis, they always seem to figure out a way to handle it. So I'm just telling you, we're at crisis point, and I'm expecting no less than from the Board, from Mike, from the people at town to come up with a solution so we can get this to work.
When we look at it, when I started as a sworn officer, 53 years ago, they had three guys on the, three guys on the road. So it's time to increase. That's a long time. I would hate to think that we have to go back to that as a normal.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Coming in. Ed, did we need to take a vote on our recommendation for these two articles?
Correct.
I'm going to make the motion, I'll second it.
Do we have to take each article individually, right? Each article is individual?
Correct.
I would move Article 13, as written, that the Board of Selectmen recommend the article and to go forward to a town meeting vote.
Second.
All right, you have the motion, second all is in favor?
Aye.
You have aye as well?
And Article 14, the same. I would recommend the article as written, to go forward to town meeting for a vote. With the Selectmen's support.
Second.
All right, you have the motion, second all is in favor?
Aye.
All right. So these are the votes you passed, favorable action, unanimous.
Question for Ed and Mike. I think it's still a town meeting vote, but might as well start doing your homework now. What can happen, what are the scenarios, where does the money come from?
Well, the reason I got up is I'd ask you to reconsider your recommendation of favorable action on Article 4, because you didn't have, you couldn't spend this thing three times. You previously recommended long-listed capital items, with the exception of things funded by the Water Department, I would ask you to reconsider.
Is that a true borrowing, Ed?
Yep.
So there's about $150,000 worth of free cash that is appropriated for those articles in Article, the requested Article 4, and the rest were borrowing, or, like I mentioned, from the Water Department.
$150,000, so much, $1,000 plus, and two borrowings, three borrowings required, and one borrowing.
So Mike, is there specific items you want us to reconsider, or everything?
I just would, for tonight's focus, just remove your recommendation. I know they were actually in the long list, I don't think they're allowed.
Okay. Ed, or Sabrina, would we need to reopen the warrant right now to do that?
No.
No?
Make a motion to amend the Selectmen's recommendation to town meeting floor for Article 4.
Second.
All right, you have a motion, second all is in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Mike, before you go, that water money that you talked about, I don't have the article in front of me. Is that part of the enterprise fund?
Correct. The loan would be repaid a lot of the time.
All right, thank you.
That's an easy one, that's a...
All right, thanks for coming in, Chief. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Before you go, Chief?
Yes.
Matt, this was addressed to you, would you mind speaking to the public about that?
Well, seems here we have some glowing praise for Chief Wall from the acting police chief from Wareham. He calls Chief Wall a consummate professional, who's an expert in locating missing people. So it seems like you did some great work here.
We spent a night over in Wareham, a 12-year-old ran away from a group on there. Unfortunately, she was found the next morning. Scary situation for any town. Well praised, but I got a lot of help. I have the Soundlike search and rescue team and a lot of other resources that were there, so thank you. If you didn't have to read that, probably would have just sent it to me.
Timing's everything.
All right, next up, we'll be addressing the board action items. First up, we have a vote to reopen the warrant to include land transfer article, this regarding parcel F-9-1, to be numbered 19.
Mr. Chairman, move to reopen the special town meeting warrant for the insertion of an Article 19 as presented.
Second.
All right, you have a motion, second all is in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Selectmen vote favorable action on Article 19.
Second.
Motion, second all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
You have a motion, second all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So, just so you know what that was about, it was quick, but the school has a piece of property on Route 53 that has been in school possession for years and years and years. They don't know what to do with it. They have no need for it, nor desire to use it for any of, any of their uses. So the school committee members have asked the Board of Selectmen to put it on the town meeting floor so that the town could take custody of the property, in the hopes that either the town would put it to use, or perhaps the town might consider a sale, and anyhow, put the property to use because it's laying fallow in the school committee's hands, and it was their request to put it in the town's hands. And we'll talk about it on a town meeting.
All righty, the description, next up, we have a vote, recommendations for remaining special town meeting articles, 13, 14, 17, 18, and 19, if applicable.
It's only 18 now.
18 now. 19 of them.
Yeah, we just took that. Article 18 is citizen petition in this request for state rep sponsor home rule petition regarding retiree health insurance.
Can we move a recommendation?
Uh, yeah.
Town meeting floor. Second.
Okay, you have a motion, second to this town meeting floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we have recommended this be moved to the town meeting floor. Next up, we have a vote to ratify town administrator's approval of the temporary trailer permit at 23 Seltsam Way.
Will the permission by the town administrator?
Second.
You have a motion, second all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, or none, and grant the temporary trailer permit. Next up is a vote to appoint Lord DeYoung of 227 Taylor Street to Historic District Commission.
Mrs. Atkinson speaks to the test.
I will be appointing Lord DeYoung of 227 Taylor Street to Historic District Commission. Second.
You have a motion, second all is in favor?
Aye.
You have aye as well? Any opposed? Hearing none, as passes the unanimous. Next up, we have a vote to, we have a signing of the special town meeting warrant to post Sabrina, are we signing this right now?
Nope, you're going to wait till the end.
All right, we'll wait till the end on that one. Next up, we have a vote to approve minutes of September 10th, 17th, and the 24th.
Mr. Chairman, move the minutes of meeting of September 10th, 2018. Second.
You have a motion, second all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes the unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, vote to approve the minutes of the meeting of September 17th, 2018. Second.
You have a motion, second all is in favor?
Aye.
President not voting?
President not voting.
I vote aye, so that also passes. And last up, we have September 24th.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the minutes of September 24th, 2018 as... Second.
You have a motion, second all is in favor?
Aye.
President not voting?
You have aye?
Aye.
So that passes as well. So that concludes the board action items. Next up, we have old business. Hearing none, we move along to the town administrator's part.
Very quick, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to announce that our office submitted a grant to the Massachusetts Commission on Disabilities, to have infrastructure improvements to four buildings and six parks, to the tune of 250,000. This was as a result of the fact that the Board of Selectmen adopted the ADA Transition Plan that we included, so that made us eligible for, to apply for this grant, which was due today, and the application went in on Friday. So I have a full list of all of the potential projects for the board to review, but I just wanted to make that announcement.
Thanks for that, Ed. Next up, we have the... Next up, we have the Ask the Selectmen portion of the meeting. Anything for that tonight?
I do. So, I've been contacted by Doc Akabuchi. It's been a while ago now, but I'm just getting around to it. I'd like the Board of Selectmen to send a memo to Conservation Commission and the Open Space Committee and invite them to see the Foundation for Immunity Nature Preserve. It's, I've walked the property myself. It's a tremendous, it's a tremendous walk, beautiful vistas, different environments, wooded, prairie, river. So, it's a very diverse ecosystem that is a nonprofit, and Doc would like to show the Open Space Committee and Conservation Commission and any Board of Selectmen that wants to go. So, I'd like to send a memo out to all those folks, and if they accept, I'll set up the meeting with Doc, and we'll walk the property, and it's a great afternoon. And so, as you see, that's here in Pembroke.
Is this for future plans of purchasing that property, or is that just...
Oh, he wants to sell the land eventually. He's, he's getting on in years, and what he wants to do is he wants the property to go forward in the right hands, so he wants those folks to take a look at it. He'd be tickled pink if the town of Pembroke bought it. And if we had the money, we should, but I don't know, I don't think we're in that position right now. But he asked if I could bring the Open Space Committee and Conservation along just to view it for themselves, and I thought it'd be a great opportunity for them. It's a great piece of Pembroke.
It is. I would have to say the same as you. I've been on the property, and it is a really nice piece of property.
Yeah, I agree. So, he reached out to me when I walked the property, and I'm moving on the promise that I made to him in that regard.
Well, it's a good recommendation. Next up, we have new business.
Mr. Chairman, I have something else. More of a public service announcement to the folks out there in Pembroke. My wife just actually got back from the hospital having pneumonia, and hearing all the stats for the folks in the hospital, the nurses, the doctors, pretty much asking all residents of Pembroke, make sure they get their flu shots this year, or the older residents getting their pneumonia shot. It's deadly. It can take your life like that, and it's just amazing that, you know, my wife's doing well now. But it's been happening kind of all year. It hasn't really been just happening, cold season's coming up. It's been happening this summer, too. And I know one of the residents, they spent about a good eleven days in the hospital, one of our residents, with pneumonia. So, please, 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 get your flu shots, pneumonia shots. Take care of yourselves. Thank you.
I thank God your wife is feeling better. Next up, we have upcoming issues. On October eighth, there'll be no meeting at Observance Camp Columbus Day. On October fifth, or fifteenth, at 7:00 PM, there'll be a joint meeting with the moderator and advisory committee. This is in regards to the town meeting. Also, on that same day, a half hour later, there'll be a joint poll hearing with National Grid Verizon at 15 Corporate Park. Well, the meeting's here. It's regarding 15 Corporate Park. On October 23rd, there's a special fall town meeting at 7:00 PM at the high school. On November 5th, at 7:00 PM, the Board of Assessors will be in, and this is in regards to the fiscal year 19 tax classification hearing. That's an annual one. On November 19th, there'll be Class One, Two Taxi and Precious Metal License Renewals will happen. On November 26th, there'll be no meeting, and it'll be a Thanksgiving recess. On December 3rd, the Common Pitacular License Renewals will happen. On December 10th, the Liquor Live Entertainment Sunday Amusement Device License Renewals will take place. On December 10th, we will set the Selectmen's winter break schedule. And lastly, on December 17th, we will discuss the Selectmen's 2019 calendar. So, there's a lot coming up. Ed, is there need for executive session tonight?
We will.
We do.
I would move under Section Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, to conduct contractual negotiations with non-union personnel, police chief and fire chief, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of students' public body, and the chair so declares superior officers' contract and police unit negotiations.
And the chair does declare...
Second.
On the second, and the chair does declare, we'll take a roll call. Tom?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
All righty. We'll be moving into executive session. Is there need to come back out?
You may, Mr. Chairman. You may.
I may be back.
What's Bill's last name? His father was Mr. Bean.
I don't know. Richard, that's it.
Yeah. They're nice people.
Mr. Bean.
That doesn't sound right. Probably through a thousand times a week.
If you're listening, there's a couple of people at town saying so many historic houses are coming down, you'd think it'd still be flourishing.
Yeah. Actually, I don't think it'll be still doing.
All right. You're in open session?
Yes. As a matter of fact, is everybody's microphone clean? Do you mind putting the button? Thank you.
Yeah, he was a great guy.
Yeah, I didn't know him personally.
All right. So, it's 8:12 PM, and you're back in session?
All right. We've come back to open session to take a vote.
Move the contract with the chief of police as negotiated.
Second.
There's been a motion. Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the contract passes unanimously. Ed, is that it for votes left?
Most to adjourn.
Second.
There's been a motion. Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That concludes tonight's meeting.